All right, Mike.
God, you're early.
Just barely.
It's nippy out there.
Isn't it though?
Yeah, you walked the whole way.
I thought he was skipping or running.
No, there was no skipping.
No skipping.
A little too slippery on Park Street.
Oh, hold on, I'll send a text.
So Denny, what did you walk through on your way here?
I don't know.
I mean, I'm usually the guy.
Okay, fantastic.
What?
You have a cleaning lady now.
Oh, yeah.
Who did we get?
I don't really know, Jim.
I heard about that.
She did? She agreed?
Yeah.
Great.
She cleaned once.
Great.
Excellent. We give her something.
You're right. Everybody stomp your toes.
Sure. The way we usually do the budget is we go through and put the numbers in. And then we add everything up. We see where we think things are out of whack or review it a second time. And the other thing I want to mention tonight is we have talked about this before. So something to think about at the end of the budget. Do we want to start our own FEMA fund so we don't have to deal with the federal government? Chat is becoming a worse and worse nightmare for everybody.
Something to think about for sure.
It is.
I mean, we've got to, if we're going to budget it, we've got to have to figure it out this week. So some, whether, whether we start something, whether we put something together, whether we put it to the voters to, to put a little fun together.
I think the latter for sure. But either, well, you're going to go before the vote.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to start the general budget because of my staff who with the highway budget. And so on page one, we have an analysis of town general budget. And she's wrote down all the requests except for Bull Spring Park has it out there. And yeah. Collaborative is the same. Park Association's the same, GNET's the same.
Oh, sorry. Never mind.
He's just.
Sorry.
Healthcare rehab's the same. Rescue squad's the same. And it's down off $100. Mountain Valley Health. And so I've got a question on that. Before we questioned it and it was explained that the board of directors at the health center managed these funds into care of them. From what was said previously, now the funds are going to go to North Star. And I have a little problem.
Were you here when, were you here when the guy was spoke?
Yeah, he was on.
From North, or he was on.
Yeah.
Yeah. He sort of explained that a little bit.
He did say they would be allocated for use only at mountain. I don't know how they figured that out, but he did say.
How was they going documented?
We could type and try to find the letter that he sent.
Yeah, it just reminds me to shut my phone off.
You do.
Well, you guys are fine with it. I'm questioning because I, we're giving money to a corporation.
Yeah, kind of were before, but we knew.
Yeah, that we, you knew it was going to be spent.
That it was going to be spent.
Yeah.
We didn't know what they were going to spend it on, but we knew that they were going to spend it.
So is this the first year that it's going to North Star?
Yes, it is, yeah.
I believe they don't have a board anymore. They were running to the lab and using that money to go for the laboratory and processing all the lab work in-house, but North Star no longer allows them to do that.
Yeah.
So if they go for, the board may still own the building and if they go for upkeep of the building and things like that, I don't, I don't really know.
Then why is it going to North Star?
Because they're not a separate entity anymore.
Because they belong to, North Star handles all their budgeting. So all their money goes to North Star and is allocated from there back to them.
But there still is, I think, a mountain valley health clinic.
Yeah.
And I recall that they've got a endowment on the order of, you know, like 100,000 bucks that they try to, and they used to spend it on things like, you know, helping with a x-ray machine, but they, you know, they don't, they're not allowed to do any diagnostics there anymore. So I'm not sure what's.
Can we put a question mark next to it for tonight? I think that should be.
We need a pretty good explanation on that.
An explanation. Okay, hold on. I'm going to write that down, Denny. Don't move on yet.
And we'll have Shawna check into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
No, no problem. The nurse project went up $1,000 in vehicle maintenance. So that's where probably most of the increase is going.
I think her number of patients in Weston is also up, just as a side note, just adding that.
Neighborhood connections is the same. Seniors is the same. Sevs is same. Sevs is the same. Blind is the same. Independent living is same. We know $250. No, nothing from my visiting nurse.
Yes.
Nothing in there yet.
Right.
Well, the deadline was December 31st.
There. Everybody's late.
Everybody's late?
I mean.
We're all late.
You ask for December and you get what you get? Okay.
All right, cemetery is the same. Rec clubs, same. Fire department's the one that took the big raise.
Wow, yeah, we should, we should look into that one.
They sent their letter.
They did send their letter.
And Kim has sent an email that I was received on asking for them to, you know, that it's more than doubled.
Someone should show up. There, there's clearly some capital thing that they want to do. I'm guessing. I'd like to know what it is.
They outlined it in the letter.
And the letter says that I can't remember.
Sent out to you. I can get another copy if you'd like it.
I think the, yeah, I think I understood the letter and I also just want to make sure that the numbers match up because it, I just saw some
well.
numbers in the, in the financials not matching up with the, the, the letter itself. So I think we should have an explanation when someone doubles there.
True, and I don't know if they remember this because there's been such change up there. Once they start pushing above, if my memory is right, 50 or 55,000 in their budget, that changes their whole tax structure, I believe, with the.
Well, they've been above 50 for quite some time, just based on 46 coming from, coming from the town and appropriations plus their fundraising and I think it was 26,000. Yep.
So, you know, if they're not taking the steps to do the proper paperwork, they should.
So we also have in potentially, which I think is why the number is high, is there was a huge discrepancy between what they asked for from FEMA and what they received from FEMA. And I did see some things in there about the, the upgrades and the structure, you know, for the structures, but the town did invest almost 100,000, I think it was into the structure itself. So the structural stuff was covered by the town. I don't think there's anything that they're out of pocket on.
Remind me, does the town own that building?
We own the building.
That's what I thought, yeah.
What they would be out would be anything, contents, contents. We have the generator and we have that big air exchanger unit.
Air.
Yeah.
Well, one of the costs is.
It's a compressor for.
I won't say, I'll let him explain. I'm, I would just guess him out.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think, I think a short explanation. They have a new president and I'm sure they've gone over their budget numbers. So let's, let's invite them in.
Yeah, just so we understand what it is that is causing that big increase specifically.
Do you want to invite to like tomorrow's meeting, you know, or the?
If they can make it.
If it's, if Leo's available and he can zoom, he's the president. I think that he would be.
I will try, but I.
Sure. Let, let's just see if, if they can spend five minutes and explain it and help us understand it.
Because Kim's kind of got us under the gun. You said the 21st?
Um, well, in order to make all of our deadlines, it needs to go to the printer by the 20th.
Okay, the 20th.
It's really tight.
Yeah, we're under the gun. That's why, when you ask them.
Let them know.
Yeah. All right, so I think we've completed appropriations list. Town office building.
Are we with the?
We still have library.
Well, yeah, the libraries, we were teed up for 45, is that right?
No, we owe them $45. That wasn't.
Oh, 45 for the, oh, I see.
Some grant money came in at the end of the year and when I paid it back over to them, because that's how it works, I transpose the numbers. So I owe them $45. Just leave that. I was thinking I could just give them cash. Just take it out of there.
Howie's got this one.
I would if it would make this easier.
Anyway, um, I see that Linda Sarnioki's up there. Is she here to speak about the library?
She's, she's, she's listening in.
For another purpose.
Just.
I'm just here as an observer. I am not here to speak for the library. And, and the library hasn't decided fully. The board is meeting on Sunday to make final decisions about the budget for next year. So you will get the, you will get the request for appropriation as soon after that as, as can be done.
That'd be, yeah, because that only gives us another week.
You, you will have it Sunday or Monday?
Okay. All right, go down to town office. There's not any increases in payroll taxes, Kim?
No, so I, as in the past, I just moved over whatever was from 24 into the 25 category. So you'd have a number there. We don't have any changes to our payroll.
Kim, on the janitorial, the cleaning, is that 1,500 going to work for this year?
What are we paying her? I don't, I haven't had to pay her yet. So I'll, I'll speak it and see.
Yeah, I mean, just, just so that number agrees.
Um, no.
Okay. Then I think it must be this.
Is it by? Yes. It's 45. So, um, it's two hours a week in the winter and every other week in the summer.
They should, yeah, we'll figure that.
I will. All right.
I'd rather be safe than sorry. I mean, I, I think it's best to come up with a number that.
For the building, we put in five for last year. I think we only get a five and make a more conservative effort to get somebody to do some of this.
Agreed.
I think I've forgotten to spoke column and see if it's anything easy and I actually did.
And does the money that's left over from this year carry over in those budgets?
It's called a surplus.
Right. And it carries over in the same category or does it go?
No, it goes into the general budget.
Okay, okay.
Then they vote to reduce the tax burden by whatever the surplus is.
Whatever the surplus, yeah.
It's not like the military where they tell them, well, spend it before the end of the year.
Yeah, user rules.
Fire extinguisher.
Yeah, this fire extinguisher, we can put $100 in there. I've asked Shawna to check to see if that's a mandatory service or not, because I was there at the grounds last year when the guy came in and.
He just looked at the little, at the little arrow and if it's in the green, it's fine, right?
He takes a rag and polishes it up. They're supposed to. But he didn't, because I was there while he was doing that. They're supposed to turn the fire extinguisher upside down, take a rubber mallet hit the bottom of it two or three times to, you know.
Shake up the, yeah.
Yeah, he didn't. And so if it's not mandatory, hell, we can learn, see if the H has charged or discharged.
And that would depend on what kind it is because there are CO2 ones and then there are these things.
Well, this is. Right, that's, the $100 is for this one right here. So.
That's what they've got them.
We have three or four here. There's one on each level.
Let's leave it at 100.
Isn't it, isn't it a state fire requirement?
Well, that's what she's going to check.
Okay, because I know other organizations have to have the same inspection done.
I'm just about to take a $100 bill out of my wallet and let's move on.
Grounds and maintenance.
2,000?
I think you should go back in at 2,500. I, I would really like the grounds and maintenance to include whatever fix for that light fixture is, we talk about it. So can we put 25 back in?
Yes. I, 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 I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
Office equipment, 1,500.
Sure.
Office supplies.
It was a dozen years and everybody needed stuff.
Yeah, I mean, everything got more expensive.
Um, I don't think so. Last year was an auction year. We just had more projects.
All right, let's split the difference 25.
2,500, yeah.
Uh, postage, I think, leave it 19.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, wait a minute, we're going to be, is that coming out like they're going to be having a lot of mailings going out with reappraisals that come now listeners budget, our budget, owners budget?
Well, it usually comes out of our budget because we have one thing for postage, but sometimes they throw in something else. We have some office expense postage. They had a special mailing that I threw into their budget. They put 100, they spent 800, so.
So what's a one-time mailing cost us?
Um, that's almost a dollar a piece, isn't it? Like 73, 75 cents. So if they do 600 pieces, it's $500, 600?
All right, let's put the 19 at 24.
Okay.
Cover a one-time mailing and hopefully it'll.
Not go up again.
Yeah. Heat service contract, two?
I don't know.
Heard, are we going?
Can we just back up to postage? You know, I, we buy these forever stamps. Can we get forever bills for the postage meter?
No.
For first class?
No.
Because I've, I've always thought that's a great, you know, I, I buy.
Did we have a number for that?
You know.
In the contract?
Six rolls at a time.
Because it's a reduced rate anyway.
It is. They, they limit us to $150 a month.
Oh, okay.
There was no number plugged into the contract.
There's no contract. They just.
They're annoying.
So they've got you, yeah, okay.
I'm just laughing.
And heating services for the building.
For the.
The furnace.
Furnace downstairs, yeah.
We'll leave that at 200. Electricity, we gotta add five.
Yeah, I've read something that it's going up or they're.
Yeah, that's what they were going 5.3%, so.
So I'll make it 2,400?
Better go 25, Jim.
Okay.
It's 10%.
Yeah.
220.
Yeah. Wow, how'd we do so well on fuel?
We said 2,500, Danny, I'm sorry. Okay.
Because guy who delivers still give us a bid price all through the year, the bills for coming in less than the price.
We had an easy fall. We hardly heated this fall and a losing spring.
So in a warm spell in the winter.
Yeah.
Which is going to go away now.
Oh, I think we cover our butt if we just leave it 21. You any idea what he's charging a gallon right now off the top of your head?
I thought it was like 340 something or 360.
I just got a bill a couple of days ago. It's 310. Marcel's was 310. So. Number two, right? Like fuel, like, yeah.
What do we use propane for?
Generator.
They fill the tank.
Right, right. Oh, right.
It was a one-time fill, one-time fill, so.
Probably 150 would cover.
I, more than, yeah.
Or you want to go for 100?
If it makes any difference.
All right.
150 is fine. I'm, I'm using, my generator uses like, it's like $25 a year. I mean, it's, that thing does not use much propane.
And we haven't had long power outages.
Right.
This year in particular.
Yeah.
All right, so you're going to have to add the 5.3% to the actual on the street.
Street electors are, are, do we have LED bulbs in that? Could we get?
No, but.
You can't even get anybody but a bulb in this one.
Oh, Mike Savage would love to do that, wouldn't he?
No, but.
No?
Yeah, no.
Have you, have you talked to him about this, Howie?
I, I've talked about LED lights. We need them all over. The stuff that they get there.
3680.
It does make a difference.
It makes a huge difference.
Huge difference.
It's like times 10.
Or, or, yeah, or more.
It's 3680 on the lights.
3680, is that your 5%?
Yeah. That, probably go back and we figure the 2,500 on electricity up above by. Should probably do them.
121, so 2204, 121 is 2325.
You have your count.
225.
I trust you. 2325, so we could go to 2,400 and, and be conservative and save 100 bucks.
2,400.
Telephone. Oh.
I have no idea why it's going up so much.
Well, let's trigger it at 5%. It will be.
3,300. 30, 3150, excuse me, 3,100, right?
Yeah, 3,100 should do it. Now to, exactly on the run, but do same thing with the thing, 2,100 for the rugs.
And I think your town report will come in around 3,600.
3,600?
Yeah.
For the report?
Printing. Do we want to, is it printing and mailing? Just print?
Yeah, no, it's printing and mailing.
Because they do the same thing. Yeah.
You want to factor in considering town office building, the generator service contract thing?
We should meet a contract this year, Howie.
Well, this year, but then next year you will. You pay next year for the year.
And now, yeah, we'll be paying for it.
Yeah.
We'll be paying it in this calendar year, right?
Yeah. Yeah, because it, because it, it's going to be, depending upon how much we want to get into the weeds with them on, on when it was, you know, when the generator contract actually went into effect, they installed it in July for the generator. But the whole thing went hooked up till October. So, but still that year is going to expire this coming year and you'll want to have money paid to them before, but when does our fiscal year go calendar year?
First January.
Yeah, so you want to have the first service done at the, at the one-year mark. Now, I guess maybe six months after that. Yeah.
Let's leave it.
Yeah, this year. Because still I haven't decided whether we're going to try to do all three generators or that's another discussion, yeah. Yep.
Where is this under?
It's not. We're just, we're just like.
Totally new category.
Yeah, right.
All right, so we're telling, I am still. We spent 9,000 on it.
Yeah, well, right?
Yeah, well, any idea what we did there?
No, I can go electrical done.
The dehumidifier.
Dehumidifier. There was a couple water things, water pressure things.
So, so some of that was under flood and our flood insurance. The dehumidifier was not, so I know that for sure. But that's still, I don't think it was $9,000 for the dehum.
It was close. It was a lot, as I remember, but I may have the number wrong.
Okay, we'll just look.
Let's put it in at 5,000.
And I'll get an answer for you for tomorrow night.
Yeah, because it was either six or eight for the dehumidifier. I was surprised at how much it was.
Anybody know why the fire system went up too much?
Um, they may have had more fire extinguishers replaced, so it really depends on that more than anything else.
Let's put it in at three and a quarter. Grounds and fence, they just had everything brand new, so.
I think we should still have a category there.
Put $100.
Advertising? What is advertising? Is advertising for?
Like if we have to have a painting or?
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
So I have advertised for that. I don't know. I assume it came out of us. I threw it into select board.
And the same with the group, with the fence, didn't they replace the fence?
No.
For now, oh.
That was a check. That's all on me. That's not on us.
Okay.
That's all on you.
I can go back and look at the bills and see if there's something to bring back into town annex, but you're just shifting.
Are we going to put 50 in and just keep it the same?
Yeah, just keep it open.
For the water heater or?
For the advertising.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. And, and I'm thinking 50 for those three categories, right? Including the water heater repair and replacement because we did it last year, right?
I, I can just tell you that you're not even going to get Daryl to show up for $200. So that is woefully low for a repair.
No, I'm just talking about a placeholder. I don't think we're going to, I mean, of course, I think we did so much work down there.
Yeah, we bought the water heater.
I know, but any repair, I mean, a frozen pipe or something, you get somebody to come out, it's not going to be $200. So we're going to leave 200 in.
That's for the first hour.
There you go. Get one hour. Water heater repair, 2,000?
Yeah, I was going to say.
We did that, didn't we?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking. 50 for advertising and then I lost you after that.
Yeah, heat service contractors, 200. Now we're at water heater replacement.
Got it.
That was 2,000 to replace.
But we didn't spend anything. But it shows.
I might.
Budgeted 2,000, didn't spend anything.
That came under flood.
I think the insurance company covered it.
Okay, so want to just put 50 bucks as a placeholder in there?
Yeah.
I say yes.
Purification system.
Those are the quarterly tests that you have done.
Oh, God.
I guess.
So instead of 1,000.
The testing should be at 200.
Yeah.
Bacterial testing. Is that something every year?
Yeah, so I've always, sorry, been confused between water purification system and the bacterial testing. But the testing is actually the quarterly stuff that you have done, but the water purification system.
That should be maintenance, right?
Should be maintenance.
Like refilling the, whatever the step is.
I think they come and do it all in one shop, the testing and the maintenance and fill the. They come and do it all in one shop, the testing and the maintenance and fill the.
You take the samples and.
Alright, let's go thirty two hundred on bacteria testing. That's splitting.
Because that's awful. That could be high, but that's but that's okay.
Well, I'm just splitting what it actually cost us and what we budgeted last year and I'm figuring inflation and. Yeah, we get all hiccups in these things.
Basin repairs and systems. I don't know. I mean, we've done so much. How about a thousand in there just?
Okay.
I feel like just talking about it's gonna jinx us.
Yeah.
Whisper.
Yeah.
Permit fees and dues, three hundred. Leave that there.
Yeah, that is um the water license through the state and we belong to the Vermont Water Association. Which helped us during COVID.
Three hundred?
Yeah.
I think we should talk to uh the Vermont Water Association about flooding, don't you?
Where where that dirty water comes from.
Yeah.
Potable, potable water.
I I just have my water tested my well and it's no bacteria.
Yeah, yes. E. coli.
What happened? What happened to Pat Salo in the animal control? Did we have a wild animal that didn't?
So some of that was um uh there was a dog bite incident. He was chasing a lost dog. It's above and beyond his usual monthly duties. Um, because I did go back and look at that and I did have to shuffle some beaver control out of there.
I was gonna say, there was some beaver issues too, so, okay.
When when.
Contract services under highway.
When when he shows up to get a uh, you know, a wild dog. Do we have a way of charging the owner of the dog? Of passing that on, that extra?
No, we have no.
Should we?
Well, we could add that to dog uh penalties for not licensing and, you know, for doing late, late, late or never doing. I mean, there's all sorts of things.
I'm just, you know, just asking.
I know, I'm sorry.
You wanna leave it at, say, three thousand?
Maybe just put it back to twenty eight fifty and hope he doesn't chase two more dogs.
Yeah. I'm happy.
And we'll look up dog policy later. But you're right, thirty five hundred. Well, it wasn't, yeah.
And I propose we stay thirty percent over our costs on the childcare payroll tax.
There you go. You might have to put, pull that out of your pocket. I'm really bothered by that increase.
Just ante up on the table here.
Does everybody, everybody dig out the change in your pockets?
Alright, this next one, collected run with taxes. I guess we have to ask Kim. This year it was eighteen thousand, the actual expense. Where are we in comparison to uh twenty three for showing the taxes?
I think we're comparable. We're at sixty seven thousand outstanding for twenty twenty four. That's the big bulk of it and. Um, you know, it it. It is always over ten thousand dollars, but we usually say what we put in as an expense, we'll put in as a revenue. And they're gonna balance.
Yeah, so it was it was twelve in twenty twenty three, so.
Yeah. Yeah, just leave it.
Crazy, right?
Right.
And just let you know, we do have a candidate for.
Oh, dang, I did send the letters out today, but um so we had a particularly big heavy hitter in there this year that wasn't expected. Um, someone who's never done this before and it was someone with multiple properties and it was pretty sad, so I don't. It was extraordinary.
Yeah, we'll leave it at that. Um, taxes.
No bad feelings. Oh, no, I what it was, I know, but but it would. You know, nobody was ranting and raving. It was just.
No.
Sucked it up and dealt.
Sick to their stomach.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Gotten to do it.
I've I've done it and that's what you do.
Yeah, you get sick.
Yeah, a lot of people do.
Yeah.
I've done it twice.
Get sick to their stomach or just.
Both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, conservation commission.
We could just leave it alone.
Yeah, what, yeah. Do we have a basis for?
I say leave it alone.
Done anything for.
No, they haven't done anything for, and you know.
That's a country, so.
Yeah. Oh, damn firewarden.
Jeez, he's rubbing his blind.
Just. I say leave it all the same. Oh, medical expense.
That's because um Alman had medical expense as um, you know, your premiums and he had a small portion. As a firewarden, so the system just divvies it all out.
Yeah.
Anyway, I can bounce.
I'm glad, I'm glad to leave it all the same.
Okay.
Just like that.
Actually, listers not yet updated.
Right, um, I'm hoping to hear from Greg on um Thursday. They, I think it's going to be somewhere right in line with that because. Even though they may have more hours from their consultant, um, it's still below budget as of last.
I'm assuming that the postage was probably the the, hey, we've got auditors coming.
Um, I think that was their one big mailing that they did um to let people know this has come down.
Are they figuring hours for appeals and grievances?
That um would have to be considered certainly, and I don't know if they have. I haven't seen any numbers from them yet.
I think we just wait on what their submission is, don't you?
Yeah. I don't, I don't think it'll be anything hugely different.
That would be my guess.
I wouldn't do anything again with the salaries on this. I just moved him over from twenty twenty four. So what you're on sort of.
We can't give ourselves a raise as come.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we should, the only thing I think we should reconsider is the advertising. I just feel like. It's been so long since we advertised and then you have five different things. We're advertising, I mean, five grand is a lot, but.
Shocked at how much advertising is in.
It's just expensive. It just really is. So I I don't think five hundred is realistic anymore, but I also don't think five thousand is necessary either.
Just to.
Yeah, I mean.
Just as a placeholder.
Unfortunately.
Conferences and workshop, I'd leave that at two hundred.
Mm hmm.
Uses subscriptions, make it three fifty. I don't know what that's.
Whoops.
Oh, Zoom.
We added more for Zooms.
Yeah, yeah. Let's make it three fifty. Mileage reimbursement. Leave it ninety. That's what I would do.
Mm hmm.
I have asked Shauna to keep an eye out for uh. Paints are safety schools and make them up. Send the two employees out of the road together one at a time, but they both need to go.
Good, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, I had to use up that election um. Grant, and so that's why you see all those boxes. Um, but the charges will hit in twenty five. And so that's what that twenty four hundred on the election expenses is.
Alright.
You had the benefit of the income in twenty four, but of the grant money in twenty four.
And the uh. Just backing up to the medical that that was um.
Yeah.
Alright.
Based on that.
That's just based on the quote. Okay.
Based on what you already knew.
Yeah, I got it.
On the health insurance share.
Yeah.
Uh. Up to credit and the lady up there negotiated with the insurance company and got it down to a seven percent increase.
Blue Cross Blue Shield?
It wasn't Blue Cross Blue Shield. Negotiate with them.
You have a lot of people. I mean, that's.
That shouldn't make that much of a difference. It really shouldn't. And we're running uh roughly a hundred seventy employees up there or something like that.
And the big difference is the age of the employees.
Are you telling us?
If you have a young.
Did he just say?
Young group rather than an old.
I think you should just stop.
Calling everybody old.
No, what he's saying is I'm young. That's that's exactly what I'm saying.
Here's, here's the thing. I I I won't get into the medical thing again, but. It is a benefit. It is a, it is a, I don't wanna call it a mini raise, but it. For the for the people that we have and the salaries that we pay, I'm not gonna fight over this number. I just can't.
No, no, no.
So I think, Kim, if you're good with all your numbers, then we're good with your numbers.
Yeah, be before we go too much further, do we do uh or have you done in the past? Like even going back up to select board for uh like cost of living increases for in terms of the salaries?
Well, Kim's get voted on a town meeting.
But we have to propose something. So it usually comes to you with a suggestion. Um, social security was increased two and a half percent, I think.
Yeah.
And so I usually give you two and a half, three, and you know, somewhere just slightly above three, and then you all get together and decide what you're gonna do.
We usually stay us pretty flat line, but circumstances in the last couple of years, that line has spiked unfortunately.
Yes.
There I am, our people help the fire unfortunately, how we.
Right, but al- also in that whole thing, we knew that the medical benefits expense was gonna be more. That's a benefit to them instead, you know, to the employees, so.
Hey, uh, I guess we're zoning administrator.
I just left it the same. Um. It's been active. He's right at that um budget number. What you had.
Has there been any new um movement on on him wanting to consolidate his position with between the towns?
I haven't heard anything from the towns or, yeah.
Yeah, that.
I had, I had a conversation with him. And uh. At the end of the conversation, he says, I got two more years and I'm on Medicare, so I'm not too worried about it.
It sounded to me like unless there was somebody who was gonna take charge of that thing, it wasn't, there was no way you could hurt the cats of the towns to.
Yeah, that's exactly the case. That's where we were at.
Yeah.
Is that someone needed to initiate?
And we said, I mean, our our response was, well, if you've got somebody who initiates it and makes a proposal, bring it to us and we'll consider it, but that wasn't gonna happen.
Right now, I. On priority list, I would say that would probably be kind of low with everything, all the towns got going on. Especially them guys who have in their stuff rejected.
So we'll leave it as is?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah. May go over, but it would be slight.
The pay is, Lisa, is kind of reflective of his workload.
Right, right.
And so apparently this year in twenty four, it was just about the budget.
Yeah, right on, right on par.
Yeah.
I can't see it continuing myself.
There was a lot going on in twenty four, I have to say. It's a lot of.
Planning Commission.
I have not um got their update yet, but surely the cost for the town plan would go down.
Danny and I were talking about um. You know, if. You know, hiring consultants to. Uh. I mean, the the next stage after the town plan.
Hmm.
Um. And I I gotta say, I don't understand this perfectly. We thought that if we were gonna rewrite the town plan. Um. That it would have to go back to the planning commission and then um then we'd have to have a town meeting and, you know. And that's gonna just take forever, but apparently that gets us outside of the drop dead date for a a grant to help with writing. Um. The uh, the new bylaws, the new zoning bylaws. So, you know, my question is whether we should, whether it would make sense to. For instance, not rewrite the town plan, just approve it as it is. Um, write a side letter saying, you know, these are, these are our concerns about it and our feelings about it. And then uh. Uh, then apparently there's a five thousand dollar grant. Uh, how or there's some grant grant money that would help the planning commission rewrite those zoning bylaws. Um. And, you know, I I just, I just.
I think when we farm it out, we end up making a a small thing, a big thing. So I'm a little concerned about that.
But they're completely unequipped to do. To to do zoning bylaws.
And the only.
A bunch of civilians.
Only zoning bylaws that we need to change are ones that would either A, keep in. Keep in line with the town plan as we accept it, or B, those state rules that sort of affected our town plan, so that might might cause some changes.
There's also a a a punch list of things that the that the DRB says don't make any sense and and just need to be changed to make. To make the thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically make sense.
So when are we gonna, do you wanna just have?
Well, the problem is if we don't, we don't approve this thing by the end of. If at the end of January, if I understand this correctly. Uh, we're not in compliance. We can't change anything until twenty twenty six. So, I mean, there's a real, real potential cost to to our not doing this. I I don't wanna waste time at this meeting going through this, but you know, this is gonna be an issue that we need to maybe talk about um.
So I I have all the paperwork lined up for the fourteenth. January, January to ask for an extension to April first for us, for the town plan. That gives us time to review. Set up another public meeting, all that stuff. So I need to kind of know if we're, I mean, I don't care either way. They said it's, but it's totally usual for this time extension. They only grant one per town, but it happens. But.
Okay, well, we haven't used it, so if we had to, we could, but I'm also okay with not just just signing off on it the way it is and buying us some more time.
And and.
It would be great, but.
The trouble with writing the side letters, and I've been through this before, is they get renecked. I've been staffed, I've been around a long time and it's been, you get staffed in back more often than not and. Yeah, we got, somebody's not happy with the changes we're making in the plan and I think that we gotta figure out a way to have a meeting and.
We're meeting on the twenty first.
We're meeting on the fourteenth for select board anyway.
Right, and twenty first for the town plan specifically.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get asked through that.
Anyway, I'll I'll do some more homework.
Yeah, and the fourteenth is book solid. I saw there's like too many things on it, so we don't wanna get into that.
There's like four.
Because I don't really wanna end up like what happened down the road.
Oh, I don't think there's any.
I don't wanna plug in numbers for the planning commission, but I do think that we should yank their chain about getting it in so that we can do our part, so Kim can do her part and. We're all kind of on hold.
Shauna, would you make that call? Or Kim, would you make it?
Shauna's nodding yes.
Yeah.
I guess you have to do same thing with development.
No, I I for some reason she's had trouble with my emails and I just mailed it to her. They just got us her letter today. I expect them to be here.
Okay, so we'll just put it on hold for tonight?
Yeah. Um, on the insurance, I just got the breakdown on it tonight, so I'll have that for you tomorrow.
And what's that? What insurance is that?
That is property insurance predominantly.
Okay.
Very little work in con, but it's. Very little work in con, if it's us and the library and the higher department, public works.
Is that all through V L C T?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the quarterly bill, just so you know, is ten thousand dollars, some of that is a lot of equipment insurance for. The highway, it's gonna be forty thousand for the year.
Yeah.
For everything.
Yeah, so about eighteen is on your side of it, and then the rest of it's on the road crew side, got it?
Right.
Okay.
What are the legal fees?
Call it's a Merrill, and there were some um.
Those uh.
But miscellaneous.
Yeah. Personnel policy.
Leave that at.
I, I would say three again.
So. Inticipation note, that should drop down to probably two, to straight.
What, what, what was the interest rate we charged last year? It was a low number. Yeah, I. Um, let's make it two. That, that sounds right to me. It's right in between those two numbers and.
I don't remember what the generator annex cost was gonna be, because that was really taken care of, isn't it?
Well, I got, you got a donated one right at being sold.
Donated one didn't work, we ended up fixing.
No, no, we donated one, ended up working, but they were just able to find the right person to fix it, they needed somebody to fix a part. And, and.
We're not gonna put four thousand in, so.
No, five hundred, I agree.
Yeah. Can we, can we just put that under annex though? Is there?
Yeah, why is that there?
I don't know why it was there.
Let's move it, yeah.
It varies, the actual number on the transfer station, the thirty two thousand. And then the mountain towns, they're on a fiscal, we're on a calendar, so it's half of what we've already paid and half of what we were paid.
And the baby shit service?
Thank you, yeah, yeah, um, we're just gonna leave those two numbers alone, I assume?
Yeah.
Did anyone hear from Esther Fishman about the? The, the fees, the FEMA reimbursement fees?
Tina about it, and she was told it was nega- negligible, I was really kind of annoyed about that. Because I had been told that there would be some reimbursement to us.
Yeah.
FEMA expense.
Absolutely.
And there was nothing.
Okay.
Alright, computer software.
It's pretty cheap for computer services.
I just get an Adobe little thing that lets me change Adobe Word. And that's, oh, you have that? I do have that, do you want that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll make this fifty bucks then.
Oh, that would be. Whoa, whoa. So there's nothing else in anticipation, Kim, that we should think about?
Um.
I mean, two thousand is a lot to drop to twenty three.
There's something, there is something that might have a drop dead date, I need to. There was something with Microsoft again, but something was dying.
What would happen if we put the total computer consultant at two thousand? And filled in the blanks to equal that? Would that be a reasonable approach to this?
Yeah.
You could put a thousand software or five hundred each one.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, there may be a death now for something with Microsoft again, I'll have to check on it.
Oh guaranteed.
Otherwise, we'll just leave in the two thousand, if, if you think it's gonna go over, then we'll just, we'll just bump it.
Alright, so five hundred and the other two?
One thousand in software, five hundred in the other two, total two thousand.
Okay.
Or special funds.
Which in the balances to the right.
Yeah, the painting and the maintenance fund, I would go four thousand again. And I explained with the vehicle thing. I think we should bump that to forty.
Fire apparatus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
We can leave spam thing at uh.
Three.
Three. And um.
Bring over fifty unless we are hurt, unless we hear something different?
Yeah, that. That's. Linda, you're gonna have to put on your work hat here, is there Wilder? Oh, she's not.
I'm here, no, I'm here, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The uh, we normally have, we did fifty thousand dollars for the uh. Wilder Memorial Library Capital Fund, uh we're talking about doing another fifty this year, that's a good thing.
Um, I, I can't speak for the board, that's up for discussion. Um, yeah, put it in at fifty, and it's certainly not gonna be more than that.
Okay.
Does that help? Well, it might even be under fifty, there you go. Yeah, there you go, might even be under fifty.
So everything pretty, everything stays the same except for the um, uh, the, the fire apparatus.
Yeah. Bought it um.
I think it'll be that same number.
Same number, okay.
We're on the last year of our three year contract, so.
Oh, okay. So standby kids.
We're all on the last year of a three year contract, so they did twenty one, two, no, they did, whatever. Twenty four, twenty three, twenty two, and they did one, one year.
Again, Sean.
Alright, so then we go down to miscellaneous.
Grand expenses, this is grant applications.
I believe so, I don't mind going and pulling that information, um, it wasn't anything for me, I wonder if it was.
That would be under uh the P C though.
Hydraulic. Were there fees related to hydraulic?
Why don't you check on it?
Yeah, we'll just.
Yeah, open webpage, should we do six hundred for that?
Yeah, I think it's gonna renew again, and emails are renewable.
And what's abatement?
So I have to check that number, but we abated taxes, and I thought it was more than that, we abated the education taxes.
For the two places that burn.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So um, I'll double check if that was the number. Um, because we, we abated a couple because of the flood, so we would have had to give up our tax revenue on that. For town, but also um, we put in, I put in a reimbursement request for ten thousand dollars. For the education portion.
So this would be the balance, Kim, this is kind of what's left over, yeah.
Yeah.
That would make more sense.
Yeah.
But you'll check on that. Yeah, right. And V L C T, that sounds like an actual number.
Correct, that is based on um, they have a calculation.
Yeah, okay.
Population.
Yeah. Um, copier and lease, I.
It's gonna be close enough.
It's close enough. Windsor County tax, um, they're probably right in their budgeting right now, but that's my guess, and I just threw in that for a minute.
Well, just stay, stay in touch.
Yeah. We've been just putting five hundred dollars in for the Wild Memorial Library building.
Yeah.
And never used it, so I don't know. What you wanna do with that?
Leave it this, uh, you know.
Let's leave it, look for one more year, and then when everything over there gets settled, we can scrap it.
Okay.
That was that, so.
Okay.
Um, I left a message for the annual assessment, um, we've been trading, trading calls, so I'll touch base with them before I get that. We never charge us dues, they keep asking why not, and they don't answer, so I don't think you have anything for dues.
Well, maybe the fire department, it's bill may just pay it.
It's okay.
It's a possible.
It is a possible, believe it or not. Well, they used to come in the same envelope, I don't know, but.
Alright, so we're on page five, I guess.
Yep.
Alright, so the interest earned.
We did really well. Um, about five thousand of that came from those ARPA funds. Because we didn't have to keep the interest in the ARPA fund. Um, but we're getting, you know, roughly three thousand or more a month, we were in twenty four. But you just said interest rates are gonna go down, so.
Three, how about thirty thousand?
Yeah, that's about.
Yes.
Three hundred.
Three hundred back in, yeah. This is a. This is, yeah, what we received, do you think that's gonna be about the same?
Let's be cautious about this, I treat this the same way as I treat this uh federal government. I'd rather use eighty five or ninety, I don't wanna count chickens for a rat.
Right.
I hear you, ninety?
Cause that's a good way to put you in red real quick, start. Camp.
About uh four thousand for the interest on delinquent taxes. See, how do you, and that ten thousand, you're, you, you feel good about that number?
I do, because that was in the law, if we gave it up, they'd pay us back on the education portion.
Okay.
And it was a little more than ten, but um, for my memory's sake, I put in ten.
We go back to ten on delinquent taxes?
Well, that's what you put in for expense, so this is, you know, there's supposed to be a wash.
Yeah, so what, what do we put in there for, if it's a wash?
I need ten on the other side.
Okay, so ten.
Go with uh four on the state pilot.
Four? Wait, oh, yeah, sorry.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
They don't pay taxes on their state land, and they've got about a thousand acres down now.
They're paying more than they did pay. Pilot program was pennies higher.
Well, not only that, but.
They got some more land too.
Yeah, they got another two hundred acres.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but they did offer more on that than they were paying on the other, on the other, so.
Fees, town fees, budget fees.
These are the fees that we get reimbursed a smidgen for.
So what, what's a good number, do you think?
The seven.
Seven.
We're not gonna get any more generous.
Yeah. Copier.
Holy moly, you made out like a bandit in copier fees.
Jeez.
You know?
We need another copier.
Uh, dog licenses, let's go to uh five, cause didn't they?
They just went up.
They did go, they did go up, they went up two dollars for the state, but they didn't go up anything for us.
We're gonna leave them the same?
Well, you'd have to get together and figure out how you could raise the rate, but you've already started charging.
Okay, so four hundred. Liquor licenses.
Howie would like the dog licenses to be a round number, so we can come in with a ten or a five. Alright, liquor license, sorry?
Four hundred.
Okay. Um, we didn't have any revised bills, so.
Leave it at thirty, just as a placeholder.
You get fifteen per, so, yeah.
Two thousand for the uh zoning fees. Or is that fifteen hundred, was that a big, big year last year?
That's what I was saying, you know, it was very busy for zoning, so.
So fifteen hundred or a thousand, what do you?
Fifteen hundred.
Okay. I have no idea about zoning warning fees.
Well, it's that, again, it's that putting it in the paper thing, it just costs more money to do so, so.
But this is income.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
But still.
But it's the same idea though, right?
Yeah.
Five hundred.
Um, again, this is a income that we can't.
Two fifty.
Thank you.
She wants Lou.
Yeah.
Lou.
Danny taught me well.
Work fees.
Um, I'm a little surprised, but um, I was just gonna suggest maybe eighty five hundred or eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Yeah.
We've gotta do something about those ARPA funds, don't we?
Right, but I don't think.
Isn't that coming up? We had quite a bit of time to spend them, but.
Well, this is.
We'll just spend it, we just dumped it.
We just did the one.
But, but we don't need to budget for more coming in, so it's gonna be a zero again.
Okay.
Um, no, but some of those were meant to go to highways, so it's, there's probably thirty or thirty two thousand in there that was supposed to go to highway.
Yeah, we're supposed to throw the money into the general fund.
Right.
And then there's supposed to be a paragraph saying X is allocated here, X is there. So the general public don't anticipate lowering the budget by the forty seven thousand, cause this money's already.
Right, it's unspent, it's just not unallocated, it's already, we already. Here marks.
Um, I'll come up with a little footnote there, but um, and you can tweak it.
But.
Allocated, alre- already allocated.
Yeah, cause. Yeah, unless you explain it to them, they'll just say, oh, surplus, and then that puts us in the bind.
Right, we didn't have a surplus on the general. But it came out of our fund balance, so we don't have to off, we don't have to raise taxes to offset the deficit.
On the rental income uh on the little school.
I think I put a neat footnote on that, so they paid last December in twenty three, two months, so they paid December twenty three and January twenty four. In December twenty three, so the allocated, so the actual was down by one month's rent, but I've budgeted for the one month's.
Okay, so the eleven five is the right number?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they're playing games with their checkbook.
Yeah. What do you think about miscellaneous?
Yeah, zero, that's.
Not just stuff that comes in from left field somewhere, right?
Right, and I'll, I'll just get the details where you're at.
So, I, I'm sorry, I guess I missed grant reimbursement, town plan, what, what did you all put in there?
Um, we didn't, actually, we should be due. Um. That's no.
Hmm.
Or, I'll go back and pull the number on that.
Just put a question mark and ask him, okay.
I thought it was around twelve K, and I think I just had the last bill come in, so we can do that.
Nice. And then a whole bunch of tallying will happen?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're, we're gonna do the uh. You know, the um loose ends here and go right into highway tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do highway tomorrow.
Yeah.
If we're doing highway, highway's gonna come first, just because with the snow and stuff there. He's gotta be up early and, so we'll get him early.
Same, same time, seven.
Yeah.
Um, and just to let you know, on the highway, they, the state paid us early for our highway aid, so um. We've already been, we've all. we've already been, we've already received Q one and twos, highway. They paid all of fiscal twenty-five, high rating to us in twenty-five, that is seventeen or eighteen thousand a quarter, so.
Is that on here, Kim?
Yeah, it'll show up on the actual.
So if they're paying us seven, eighteen thousand a quarter, that's gonna be a total seventy-two thousand.
Right, so our actual is seventy-four.
Yep.
They had seventy-four, five, so we just don't wanna overstate that portion of it, because we've already gotten two quarters of it.
Right, and if, when did the check come in?
Last year.
So you're, somehow you're gonna have to note that, that that's not surplus. You've, you're sitting on roughly thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars came in last year, we're supposed to have been here this year, but it's gonna show in your books for last year, so somewhere along the line, you've got a.
Well, I can.
Account for that extra money.
You're gonna lower the budget on that line item. Right? Because we budgeted sixty-five for last year and we got seventy-four.
Right, so if we've got thirty-six so far.
You're only gonna get thirty-six more for quarter three and quarter four.
Yeah, so I'd say we out our own budget thirty, because they haven't had their session up there and lord knows what the number crunchers have got to do.
Okay. Got it.
That's been my philosophy all the time, is we can put these numbers in, but we don't know what they're gonna do up there. Somebody screams, we have enough money. What the place formed cop is.
And, but we thought it was thirty thousand roughly, ballpark?
Um, I'll look at the, the payment advice, but I think it was around seven, high seventeen, low eighteen per quarter, and they threw it at us all throughout that.
Right, so that would be thirty-six.
Correct.
Thousand that we got.
That we've already gotten.
But we got it in twenty-four as well, okay.
Well, the bad thing about that is they didn't even give us cost of living, two and a half percent increase.
I think they did the same thing though in twenty-three, because they had paid us early because of the flood. Paid everybody their aid before the fall of twenty-three, so they've done it two years in a row now.
The other thing that we need to think about is usually we give pay raises first of July. Right at the moment, we're paying a fair amount more to the employees, and before, when we give the pay raise, the first of July, we figured that we'd just absorb it and it wouldn't affect us, but now I don't have the number, but we're spending more on employees, are we gonna be able to continue on that trend? I lost that one.
Right, so.
Before, how we, what we did was we would give a pay raise of three, four, five percent, and it would take effect first of July to the end of the year, cause we're on a calendar year.
Right, and that's what we did this past.
Right.
July, yeah.
But now we're spending quite a bit more money and not knowing what kind of a percentage we're gonna get. Are we, got enough slack to absorb that extra money?
After six months of.
And, and there's, there's changes that are happening just every three months, so.
You should budget for an increase, if you need more.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yes.
Are we gonna have to come up with a number?
Yeah.
My roundabout way of asking.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
No, 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 but the, the numbers are not even close to, let's say, twenty-three into twenty-four, so we're changing twenty-four just by way of what it was, and then in addition to, there's, there's additional people, there's additional payroll, so we should figure out those numbers first and then calculate the three, four, five percent.
Yep.
Overage, I mean, we're either gonna be a little higher or we're gonna be a little low, I mean, I, I think we try to get.
Well, we try to be fairly consistent, but I just don't wanna be too far out of ballpark.
Right.
But it's explainable, Denny. I mean, this is, we have been dealing with it for a year and we, at some point, if it comes up at town meeting to explain, it's, it's, it's probably the easiest thing to explain over.
And I didn't realize this till the other day, got looking at something, and Jeff has been that road foreman. If not, quite a tour, trying to educate new people. Right? And I'm gonna suggest that for right now we give him a couple bucks in our raise, cause he's had his hands full with a lot of stuff going on up there.
And let me make another mention.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight that, I think.
So, just so you know, according to what I've got here, we were under budget still. Well, because we weren't, it was going to the sick bank. And, um, and we, so we were a little over on winter, but still under on whatever. I have that chunk of vacation pay that has to get paid out in January. On me, and I'll put that down as a side note, just so, you know.
Right, but.
But you're talking a different.
It's, it's hard to figure, because I'm just guessing from what my memory tells me, is once Almond retired, Jeff wasn't hitting us with forty hours a week. And so the expense of paying him wasn't there, so that's contributing to the surplus we've got.
Right.
And, you know, we're still looking for road foremen. Jeff's being very nice, holding in there until we can find somebody qualified to take the thing over, and has he talked to you about helping him out with paperwork?
Not yet.
Cause we talked one night about Sean taking, doing some of the paperwork for him and making it a little easier up there for him, so he doesn't have to. And I was talking to him the other day, so when we get into the highway budget, just not to knock you out of your chairs, but that small truck we got, they had to order, get calipers for rear wheels.
Yeah.
And I think he told me they were sixteen hundred dollars apiece.
For caliper brakes? Those are disc brakes in the back?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. I don't know, sort of new truck?
Sixteen hundred bucks per side?
Twenty-two, I think it is.
Oh.
I think that, I think Almond's truck is a twenty-two, right?
Yeah. So.
And, and I, and I'm not sure if the bill actually came in in twenty-twenty-four, so it may be part of his twenty-twenty-five, which is why we're, we're kinda talking about it now.
No, but, I mean, when we get into the budget, because Almond warned us, he said, you know, when I get done, you're gonna have to increase your repair budget quite a bit, because he was doing a lot of the repair work now if we have to start trucking it off someplace.
No, that's the reality of having equipment like that. You have to maintain it.
Yeah, right.
That's what it costs.
It does.
Yeah, a guy told me today, they charged him a hundred and, yesterday, David told me, a hundred and seventy-three dollars an hour to work on a Ford pickup.
Yeah.
And that's one reason, I traded my last truck after three years, cause it was gonna be a pretty good repair bill for repairing anything needed.
Well, we're lucky. We, we still have Jeff. Almond's been coming in, helping with mechanicals and they're definitely not paid enough what they're worth, that's for sure.
As you get plowing and stuff, you couldn't afford to.
Sure, yeah.
So, I don't know, are we gonna do the same as we've done in the past, Kim?
Throw these away, start over?
Tomorrow night, we'll all have new sheets.
I will update this, hand them out to you, and have Sean up.
I mean, you only gotta go through the first half, not, we can leave these and rip the highway off.
Yeah, that's fine.
So you don't have to print out. What we do, Hallie, is we mark these all up, we shall print everything out. And you will have a brand new copy with no handwriting scratching on it.
Okay.
Tomorrow night, and we can detach highway, so they can just staple it to the and take this home and look at it if you want, or whatever, but.
Yeah.
No, I wanna take this home and just kinda peruse other stuff and then look at the, what we're gonna talk about.
Kim, when you're going over for highway for, not, not for highway, we're gonna be going over highway tomorrow. Can you send Jeff, you sent him a report November one, but it was from your nem, not from this, could you get him?
Yeah.
Twelve thirty-one, and just, just email it to him.
Okay.
Yes, that'd be great. That'd be great.
I didn't try.
You gotta do it quick while it's still wet.
I didn't try his brain with this, did I? But he's just used to using it looking at the other one.
Yeah, he liked, he really liked the other one, and he had it the other night, and I said, it says November first, you can't use that, so it's not accurate. No, 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 he liked it. That's, that's why he pulled that one, and I said, no, she gave that to you a while ago, you can't just pull stuff out of the pile and expect it to update itself, so that was November one, so I said, I'll ask her if she'll get you a new one for twelve thirty-one, and then I'll just talk to you quickly about the
changes. While I go run that report.
Yeah, sounds good. Are we done?
Yeah.
Done with me? Tomorrow.